Call this meeting in order to reflect the leakages.
My pleasure, we just to the fire on the United States of America. And it is our mother which is in the nation of God. The people of all the world.
Roll call.
Pittman. Pittman absent, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here, Coolos.
Here.
Coolos here, Johnson. Johnson absent, Frosto.
Here.
Frosto here, Bellato. Bellato absent, Viera.
Here.
Viera here, Rita.
Here.
Rita here, Donahue. Donahue absent, Holly.
Here.
Holly here, Fernwald. Fernwald absent, Osling.
Here.
Osling here, Thompson.
Here.
Thompson here, Carr.
Here.
Carr here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bellato is semi.
Fred's here.
And we move on to the presentation, general proceedings, I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of November 13th, 2018, that a motion filed with Carr, second alderman Coolos, any questions? Roll call.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Coolos.
Aye.
Coolos aye, John, excuse me, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye. Ten ayes.
Thank you very much, we move on to public comments, we've woken up, three minutes. And we move on then, report of city officials presenting resolutions. Regarding the cancellation of December the 25th, 2018 city council meeting, I need a motion. Motion Alden Gere, second alderman Holly, any questions? Roll call.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Coolos.
Aye.
Coolos aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye, Osling.
Aye.
Osling aye, Thompson. Thompson aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye.
Thank you very much, next we move on to a presentation, regarding the redevelopment presentation, of the address of 12757 Western, which is the old Masonic Temple, gentlemen. You want to introduce yourselves?
Sure. My name is Anthony Terratilli, I am with Three Quarters Development. With me tonight is Rob Farino, also Three Quarters, and Eric Borson, also with Three Quarters Development. So tonight we're here to discuss a proposed lease that we, for a parking lot that's adjacent to our recently acquired property, the former Masonic Temple. It is currently a public lot, and what we'd like to present tonight is, the terms of what the lease would be, and any questions you may have, we have been in front of your board, we've been part of, came in front of planning and the presentation early on, kind of just seeing with general support for a concept one, which is a medical clinic, so the Masonic Temple is being converted into a single tenant medical clinic on all floors. So in terms of the parking lot lease, we have a brief diagram, very crude, but at this stage, I think sort of the purpose, the Masonic Temple, this is Western Avenue, Masonic Temple is here, and the public parking lot is adjacent through one building over. What we have planned for, this is about a 50,000 square foot building, we're investing about $7 million of our money into the building, and the tenants coming in with probably another five to seven million of equipment and outfit on top of that, so it's a very large investment. And the extra parking that we're requesting is to support the visitor parking of the clinic and some of the staff at the clinic. The, we've been in discussions with staff about the idea, and kind of went over certain options, we would like to purchase the property, but the process to which, the time that that would take was a little bit longer than we would have available to us, so we worked on a summary here, I can, for a lease of the property, the brief terms that, I don't know if any of you have seen the lease or not, we're closing a 10-year lease with two five-year options, to be used during business hours that are laid out in the lease, Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that will be for the exclusive use for our building. Other than that, it would be open to the public. We were provided with an estimate of the value of the property through staff of $47,000 for the property in total, market value, so we took $50,000 and basically spread it over the 10-year base lease, so $5,000 a year of rent, so at the end of the lease term, it would be fully paid. You would still own the property, we would still be the tenant. We're going to be making improvements to the property, we're going to, it's currently in fair shape, but our plan is to remodel the asphalt that's there, repave it, repaint it, provide any landscaping that would be required under the landscape code, lighting if it were required, we would take on all of the maintenance 100% for the site. Even if it's being used for the public, we would take that on as our financial responsibility through the full term of the lease. There's more, and then if anything were ever to happen to our use or our building and the project went, say, dark or was closed for more than 12 months, you would have the right to cancel the lease and take back your lot. Those are the basic terms, while we're looking to try and get a commencement date immediately on the lease, we wouldn't actually use the lot until completion of construction, which is forecasted to be August of 2019, so we're sup.
Questions from the aldermen? Alden, go ahead.
My concern is, on your map there.
Yes.
The residents that are behind, with snow removal, what would your plans be as to removing the snow in the parking lot there? You know, because it's alley around the parking lot, so.
I haven't really given that much thought of it, I mean, snow is being removed now, we would be, we would work maybe and talk to whoever's controlling snow now, find the proper way to dispose of it, I don't know if you're hauling it out, or what the current procedure is for the lot with the city of Blue Island when you get that part.
My concern is just, you know, not to interfere with the residents that their garages are on the back, so.
Yeah, yeah, obviously would not be, you know, blocking access to that alley, which would block access to the garages or anything off that alley. We would take care of it, for sure.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
You mentioned 5,000 per year?
Yes.
10-year lease with two options of options?
Yes.
You're going to maintain, you're going to insure?
Yes.
And the insurance is going to, we just to work at this, on over, over the apartments for the city are?
I believe those have been forwarded to our attorney, and if there's additional insurance requirements at a later day, we could work that out and add that as part of the lease, whatever specifics the city would have that are not included in the current draft. Basically the idea is that we hold the city harmless and are fully insured, so thank them, because you're still going all on the asset.
In my opinion, the 5,000 would be a fair estimate to look at taxing, was a taxing lot, the property tax would be something in that range, so basically we can justify that basically constituents of Blue Island are not, you know, given something away for not a profitable
Well, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, sure. Alden Carr, go ahead.
So it's going to be a single tenant building?
Correct.
Who would the tenant be?
It's the Co-County Hospital system.
Co-County Hospital, okay.
Go ahead.
I've had some concerns from the business that's in that building in between Masonic Temple and the parking lot, they said they have like six or seven employees that are there every day and use that lot, so they're just concerned about what that's going to do to them. And then they're also worried, just they, how many people are going to be there on a daily basis parking in the lot? And then how many people do you expect in and out of there every day?
Well, you know, that's, I don't have an exact number of how many people will be, you know, it's kind of a cycle, you know, throughout the day. You know, what we are requesting is that it would be exclusive use for our tenant, for our, you know, and so the parking would be prohibited from any other users during that timeframe.
That timeframe's longer than what I heard initially too, I think, close later into the evening.
And that's, that's, these are the, these are the exact timeframes that we have in our lease with the county, those are their, that's not their bulk hours, but these are the, that is, those are their hours of operation.
Go ahead.
That brings up, again, the, I don't know, enforcement signage? You know, this private lot from nine to five, what lot, you know, for private use wasn't, and then the enforcement of that, that's going to be on your end, right?
Yeah, the enforcement, which will be, you know, but it would, that would be part of our management responsibilities of the building, and we would have to police the lot in some manner during business operations. It's not going to be perfect, people are going to pull on their rips, you know, and, you know, not going to be towing people out of there, but we would have to have some enforcement in place, and that would be our responsibility.
Any other questions? Alden, go ahead.
How many offices are being projected to be on every floor?
Well, it's, because there's, there's exam rooms predominantly, in the different, on the different floors, I don't, I don't have a number of.
Are they specializing in particular, you know, like cardiology or?
Yeah, they have different modalities throughout, there, there's some dentistry in there as well.
There's 20 exam rooms. 20?
Okay.
20?
20.
And that's basement to where the?
Yeah, so we are, we're using the full building, so in our engine, the basement through, and it's, it's four stories in front, and then two stories plus basement in the rear portion of the building, I don't know if we have that addition, but, and they even have, I think there's a pharmacy for their patients in there, and why some of that.
Any other questions? No, thank you for your presentation.
Great, thank you very much.
Next we have a library update presentation.
Evening, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Be brief. My name is Connie Altman, and I am the director of the library, and it's the first year I remember to tell you that. And I'm going into my fifth year at the library actually, so thank you. So I just wanted to give you some general information about things we've done and where we are. The library continues to be financially sound, we have healthy reserves, and we do make every effort to spend less and find alternative funding sources for some of our extras, which I will tell you about later. As of the end of 2017, we spent 96.5% of our budget, so we've kind of come in and lived it every year consecutively since I've been here. As of October 2018, we are at 83.33%, or we should be, but we are at 77%, so we are projected again to come in under budget this year. We are always looking for ways to save, so this year we added, for example, doing our P O L online, we saved 30% during that, and we changed our vendor for office supplies, and we've saved several thousand in that building. As you know, we had a crash into our building earlier this year, so we have spent some time dealing with insurance companies and project managers and so forth. I'm happy to say no one was hurt, and that the building reopened after just three days of being closed. We had a team effort for sure, on the staff, getting the word out, letting everyone know, and the faiths have been very warm and welcoming to us and asking how they could help us, so we've had a lot of interesting off-the-shelf things. We also installed a creative and very inexpensive security system earlier this year, because we have a great IT guy who figured out how to make raspberry pi, work with cameras, raspberry pi's a IT tool, and as a result, we were able to help the police with a criminal investigation. We have video footage of the crash into our building, and we were actually able to provide footage to the police to get some items back that were stolen from the library. So that was a good addition for sure to our building. We opened a Maker Space at the end of last year, and early in 2018, we started to see activity there, so we have had 181 programs, attended by 721 people just in the Maker Space, and I encourage you, Connie, it's a very cool place. They have things like Adremal Tool and Carving Club happened there, and a lot of DIY. We partnered with the Metropolitan Family Services, and the cool and veteran, Kerr, and veteran schools for their actual program. This has been the first time we've done that, so we've actually had organized activities, but we partnered with the schools and had them in the building doing activities once a week they come. We developed a library of things, which we expanded on hotspots, we've always, over two years we've offered hotspots that people can check out, so you can take the internet home if you don't have it or know someone that wants it. And we've added a number of things to our library of things, including portable scanner, a moisture meter, magnetic stub finder, rechargeable screwdriver, metronome, voice recorder, a port bike lock, laser level, and a Roku, and that's nice. But those are just sort of your odds and ends thing, so if you happen to be in need of any of those, come to the library and check them out. That's where I put the reference desk. We increased our partnership with the Greater Chicago Food Depository and the Illinois State Board of Education this year for our summer meal service. Last year was the first year we did that, and we had, we offered meals two days a week, this year we did five days a week, so we went from serving 200 to almost 470 meals this summer, it's a very rewarding program, and I'm glad that we participated. We have some wonderful staff members who are good at writing grants, and so last year, we had just gotten a $4,000 Best Buy grant, which we used to purchase a free printer, and early in the spring, we offered an array of classes, that was part of the contingency with the grant for teens. And so we had a number of programs, and now we have the printer in the building, and so we are working and have developed procedures for anyone who wants to use the laptop software, use our software to send something to the printer, and then there is a nominal fee for cost recovery to use it, but it's a nice tool to have. In addition, we also got $14,000 in grant funds this year from variety sources, including Best Buy again, the Dark Foundation, the Greater Chicago Food Depository, and the Illinois State Library, and we purchased books for our tech annex and Maker Space with the Illinois State Library funds. We hosted a summer reading, summer lunches kickoff event with the Greater Chicago Food Depository said funds, where we had free everything and pictures with Captain America and Olaf, you missed it. We had, we purchased two Littlebits kits, which are actually very cool, and I want a picture if anyone cares to see what they are, but essentially it's, it's an extension of steam, and so the kids are able to be checked out by teachers, families, and you can do coding, it encourages coding in a fun way, so kids can make their own games, they can make a guitar, they can make things work, but it's in a fun setting, so it makes them sort of think about the technology behind the toy. And we, we used the Best Buy money this year to enhance our music items, both in our tech annex and in our instrument collection. We hosted the Blue Island Chamber of Commerce Before Hours event, and last fall, we also hosted a veterans' luncheon at our library, and I cooked, and no one was sick. We have had increases, so many people think no one's using the library anymore, but we, and partly maybe because of where we are, partly because we continue to increase our offerings, we have over 10% increase in bodies just coming into our building. We have, excuse me, that's 6%, I have one more, 6% increase out of the bodies coming in the building, but we increased our programs offering attendance in the 10% range, and all of the items, the books, the old school DVDs, all of the things, we've had 3% to 4% increase in checking out all of those things. And our other items that I just described is a double dimension that we'll continue to have. So in the community, we were able to help with the National Night Out Against Crime, the Black Culture Nights, the family reading nights at all the schools, and I've been privileged to be part of the Blue Island Parade Committee again, and before Tuesday, Saturday, we will have movies, and the Frozen Robins at the library after the parade, so come and get your pre-hot chocolate and cookies, and, thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor's announcements, Alden and Frosto.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to submit some letter of solicitation that I received earlier this week. I'll go back a little bit, earlier last month in October, I hosted a forum here with the mayor of the municipality of Yabón Salas Corte, where a majority of the Hispanic population here in Blue Island is from, and it came about, some talks that they would like to initiate a solicitation for a sister city agreement, and as I said earlier in the week, I was out there, south of Porter, enjoying some nicer weather than what we're enjoying here, and received this letter, so I just wanted to take a moment to this one submitted to you a letter of solicitation for engaging in a sister city agreement with the municipality of Yabón Salas Corte. Thank you, and we hope to hear a response soon and move forward.
So you know it is in Spanish, and it does have a seal on it, so it is an official document, because I'm familiar with the.
Yes, I would have read it in Spanish, you know, I didn't take a second to translate it. But obviously, obviously I'm your favorite, it's a good thing, the benefits of this is, you know, you get to exchange cultures, there's economic opportunities, and also opportunities for students who would like to study abroad, either from Mexico here or here to Mexico. And actually, we do already currently have a sister city agreement with the city of Rupacagna, Italy, that was done
2006?
A little over 10 years ago, so I look forward to continuing this, in this process and formalizing it, and I, I'll keep in touch with you so we can.
Thank you. And you will analyze this in a council approval.
So thank you, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do have one, I have tonight, I need a motion to approve St. Ignace's request for their 20 Our Lady of One Luthbith procession, December 12th, 2018, at 6:00 p.m.
A motion by Alden and Rita, the second alderman Bellato, any questions?
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Coolos.
Aye.
Coolos aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye, Osling. Osling aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson aye, Carr.
Aye.
Carr aye, ten ayes.
Thank you very much, any else?
That's it, nobody's either.
Nobody's, city treasurer.
Thank you, uh, wait, a person, person from Foster and Foster. The ex-governor reports a police and fire pension. Go ahead, Jason, thank you.
Thank you, my name is Jason Franken, and I am an actuary with Foster and Foster, and this year, as in prior years, we have performed an actuarial evaluation for each of the city's two pension funds, the police pension plan as well as the fire pension plan. So when we do an actuarial evaluation, we collect all of the data, and that, so we can determine what liabilities the city has in terms of future payments that they have to make to officers and firefighters in retirement. We also collect the assets that are in the trust that are set aside to pay for these benefits. And each year, we, once we have our liabilities and our assets, we determine such things as, what's the unfunded liability of each of the plans, what are the funded ratio, and what is the required contribution to the plan? So I say required contribution, there's really two different contributions that I include in my report. One is, in our report on page five, it's the recommended amount. It's the amount that we think is most appropriate to, you know, to ensure that the plan will be solvent and be able to meet all of its future obligations. The other approach is what is outlined in the Illinois Pension Code, it's the statutory minimum contribution. And that's the amount that, if the city puts in at least that statutory minimum amount, you've met your obligations according to what the state of Illinois requires each year. That doesn't mean you're on a path to solvency, that if you follow this statutory minimum, that there's going to be enough money available to pay all of the payments, that's why we have a recommended amount, because that's the amount that we think is more appropriate. And there is, there's roughly about $200,000 difference in each of the plans between what the statutory minimum amount is and what we're recommending. So just to give you a quick highlight of the report, the reports, for the police pension plan this year, the funded ratio increased a little bit from about 29% to almost 31%. So that means for all of the liabilities that are in the plan, as of, as of our valuation date, which is January 1st of 2018, there's, there's 31%, the assets cover 31% of those liabilities. And the unfunded liability for the police pension plan is, you know, almost $27 million. And so when you have unfunded liability, you have to make, it's like a mortgage payment, you have to make an annual payment to pay that off. And in our recommended, excuse me, in our recommended approach, we're, we're addressing it like a, like a mortgage, we're trying to pay off that entire amount. What the state says is, well, you can ignore 10% of that and only base your contribution on getting to a 90% target. And so the required contribution, based on what the statutory minimum is, is just over $2 million, it's $2,011,000. Our recommended approach is $2,219, so about $208,000 higher than the statutory minimum. I know last year, the, that the city levied the statutory minimum amount, I think that's, you know, if you levy less than that statutory minimum amount, it can cause potential issues with the state. They could, you know, the state comptroller could potentially intercept state, the funds from the state that are intended to the city and redirect them to the pension plan until the statutory minimum requirement has been met. So again, the statutory minimum is the absolute minimum amount that you have, that you have to contribute. If you contribute less than that, there are potential ramifications from the state comptroller. On the fire side, the funded ratio remained pretty flat relative to last year, it was 23.8% last year, it's 23.2% this year, so it actually ticked down a little bit. The unfunded liability in the plan is about $17.5 million. So in total, the city has almost, you know, $45 million of unfunded liability. The statutory minimum contribution, again, that was the amount that has been levied in the past, we're showing as $1,282,000. Meanwhile, our recommended contribution is $1,450,000, so again, nearly $200,000 higher than, than what we expect. And I think it's important to note that, again, that statutory minimum, that's the amount that you could put in and satisfy the state of Illinois requirements, however, over the long term, by funding that statutory minimum, you are increasing your obligation to the plan. Pens, pensions are pay now or pay later, and when you pay later, you have to make up for all of that lost investment income, all that interest income that you could have earned had you had the money invested in the trust and earned 6.5% or 7% per year. So when you pay later, you have to pay a lot more later than if you pay now. So those are my brief comments, I could be here all night talking about this, but I know you have a lot of other things to discuss, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, or I can address anything else that, you know, that may be in the report that you're interested in. Yes, sir.
You're saying last year, I thought we contributed slightly more than these, you know.
Yes, I thought we did as well.
We had a big discussion, and we.
We had two, four, six.
Yeah.
Is that not true?
Oh.
You're talking about 2017.
Yes, this was 2018.
I was talking about 2018.
Yes, so the amount that was, so it's difficult for me to, you know, I wasn't at those meetings, so it's difficult for me to know exactly what you levied last year relative to statutory minimum, just, just because when you levied it, it was at the end of last year.
Oh, I understand, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and then it's collected during 2018.
You're talking about fiscal year 17.
Yeah, yes, yes, so that, what we're, this is. So that, what we're, this is prior to that, yes.
Those discussions were for this month.
Yes, you're exactly right.
Any other questions? Go ahead. So what's, let's say the fire pension. What's the recommended amount? $1,457,200.
$457,200.
What's the minimum? All right, what's the police?
The recommended is $2,219,180.
And minimum? Do we know yet what we're doing in this levy? Or that's up for conversation or not? All right, I'll wait. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, at this time, we have Officer Dave Myers, associate. He's making the presentation best he can to inform the council where we're at.
Thanks. And I'm going to pass out a couple of papers that go over just some more stuff of what Jason was talking about, and then also what we're recommending for the levy in this year. So you'll see, these are pages right out of Jason's report. There's one, the first page is the fire, or I'm sorry, the police. On the back of that is the fire. And then you'll see the comparison to what we're recommending in the levy that'll be coming up later on. So you see the, again, the first page is the, from right out of the police pension fund actuarial report. And again, right at the top of the page, City of Blue Island Police Pension Fund, and then there's a little box around it that says statutory minimum required contribution. And if you look down just past the middle of the page, there's a, I put a little box around it that says expected city contribution, and there's the amount that Jason just mentioned,
Which is the minimum.
Yes, you're exactly right. The minimum, this is the statutory minimum required contribution. If you flip the page over, you'll see on the back is the fire pension. And again, follow the same thing, it's the statutory minimum required contribution. Again, down just past the middle of the page, expected city contribution, there's the $1,282,548 that Jason just mentioned. If you flip to the next page, you'll see this is what's going to, this is what's in the levy request right now, where our request is $2,052,686, which exceeds the minimum by $41,193. And then on the fire side, there's actually going to be two separate levies, both for fire this year. One is part of the regular levy. And then this year, we're requesting what's called a non-capped levy, which is 5% of the main levy. And you see the grand total between the two is $1,322,74, which is above the statutory minimum contribution of $39,526. On top of these two amounts, we're also, each year, the city's been putting in a portion of the personal property replacement tax, which I believe in the last fiscal, or the beginning of 2018, it was approximately $28,000 for the police and just a shade under 20 for the fire. I don't have the exact dollar in my notes here, but it was right around those amounts. So I just wanted to give you a flavor for what's to come in the levy and to show that the comparison between the numbers. Any questions about what you're looking at here on these pages? If, yes?
I'll start the conversation now. Last year, I think we split the difference over two or four hour meetings between the minimum and required amounts. Is that something? Jogging your memory?
I recall some of those meetings, yes.
Something like that. We, that was the consensus. All right. In the effort of saving eight hours of time, hopefully, can we raise it to a midpoint between the minimum and the recommended? And then we can make this easy process where we can just vote on it instead of coming back from another meeting or table and spending eight hours over this?
That's certainly up to...
Basically, what I'm trying to tell the council, my recommendation is if we just do the minimum or slightly above the minimum, which is what Mr. Meyer put in here, slightly above the minimum. It's not helping the problem with not funding our pensions. And I'd like to increase it a little more. We did last year, we increased it a little more above the recommended amount, and the world didn't end. So I'd like to do the same thing again. I'll make a motion to adjust the levy amounts to the recommended amounts unless we come to a consensus in between.
I'd like to start it then.
Yeah, we can wait. I'd just like to open up a discussion, because that's the road I'd like to go, because we started there last year. I hate to kick the can down the road, and we always use that, but we didn't die, all right? The world didn't end, and we were able to increase the amount of pension contributions to fund the unfunded liabilities we have out there. That's, my grandkids are going to be paying. So I'd like to increase it a little more. Alderman, Carr, you had a question?
I guess I want a little clarification on the non-capped. Where did that money come from?
That's going to come from, that's going to be part of the property tax levy, that all, anybody who owns property that pays property tax will, a portion of their tax will go...
Okay, but it is, it is part, it's already included in the levy total?
Yes.
And I would like to say that I do agree with Alderman and Belado. I would like to go for the full amount, the full recommended amount from Foster and Foster, because the longer we put this off, the more difficult it becomes to come up with the money that we need to fund the police and fire pensions.
If you recall some of the discussions we had last year...
I do.
And you could cert, you know, you could pass whatever you want to pass, and my recommendation, if you recall, is to go with an amount we had here and then evaluate later in the year. You could always give more to the pension fund.
We don't want to beat that horse again.
Right. So again, that's my recommendation, so that you don't get tied into something, and if you needed the money in the general fund and you don't have it...
It brings a nice second point of the reducing across the board or reducing certain line items. We can bring that into the conversation too also, where if we agree to a certain amount, we can fix it or unfix it, because they're going to reduce the percentage anyway, what they give us. So you know how you don't have to reduce it across the board, you can reduce it on some funds?
Yeah.
We did that last year, right? We left this one untouched?
No, the decision was to reduce it across the board.
Yeah, basically, we didn't say, this is fixed. You have to fund this amount.
Right.
So I'm going to bring that stuff up too.
We should do better this year on the, I don't believe it'll get reduced as much as it did last year.
Hope it not.
With tip three coming back on the books, that shouldn't help out with the value of the property. So that will result in an increase overall to the city.
Thank you. Hold the power.
I do think that we should go with the recommended amount from Foster and Foster. I mean, the police and fire departments, they put their lives on the line for us every day. And then for us to come back and say, well, we're not really going to fund your pension, there may not be money for you when you retire, that doesn't seem fair.
Somebody else?
We have, we have to have that money there.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
I have one more handout. And this is a cash flow forecast, and this sort of works towards the discussion we had last week about the tax anticipation warrants. And I, it wasn't, maybe it was two weeks ago now. And I wanted to give you a piece of paper here that shows where we expect to be cash wise in the general fund. Okay, and as you can see, there's a couple of columns of numbers, and the first one is the amount that, where we expect to be at the end of December. And so we expect to start the month, which is the end of November, we expect to start the month in the general fund with just a shade under 1.2 million. Our expected cash receipts are 772,000. Our disbursements expected are a little over 1.2 million, which would leave us at about 704,000 at the end of December. You can see if we issue the tax anticipation warrants, we would have 1.2 billion, but we talked about 500,000. Those amounts go into January, and you can kind of see where we would be if we issued the warrants or if we don't issue the warrants. Now, the recommendation would be to issue the warrants. This is a, this is a projection, based on timing of cash receipts and whatnot, we could be a little short of where we are. We expect to end the month with that money, but sometimes our receipts don't come in until near the end of the month. So we want to make sure we have enough resources on hand to be able to pay our bills. This amount here that we expect at the end of December is about 250,000 higher than where we were a year ago on a cash basis. So we're in a better cash position this year than where we were last year. Again, though, this is a projection, and, you know, something, an emergency came up and we needed to spend some money, that definitely could reduce our cash position from there. So I just wanted to share this information with you so that when we talk about the tax anticipation warrants, you'll kind of have a flavor for where we stand or where we expect to be. Now, once we hit March, that's when the property taxes come in, and you see the cash position improves dramatically at that point. And part, actually, partway through February is when the tax, when the taxes actually start coming in. So, yes, your question, comment?
Did we not have a tax anticipation warrant last year? Was it 1.5 million that we borrowed last year?
No, it was 500,000.
500,000 last year?
Yes, that's correct. And we're asking to approve up to that amount? I mean, we may not actually even need all of that, but just if the necessity arises, we would have that, the wherewithal to borrow that much.
And you anticipate it's going to be paid when?
Well, that'll be up to, up to the council. Typically, the warrants are due in September. You can certainly pay them off sooner if you like, or pay off half of them sooner and then the other half later. Any kind of payment plan you choose is up to you.
I think Mr. Meyer wants to clarify a little further.
If it was a true tax anticipation, the county, whatever the money we took or borrowed, the county would take that money back in March, January, for the first taxes. We have, the last, past few years, we've taken basically a loan. The bank has given us a year to pay back. So we can pay it back as we want, or we can pay it back, as Mr. Meyer said, in September, like we did this year, the 500,000. So it's still a tax anticipation paperwork line, but it's a little different than going through the county and going through the bank. Okay? So, and like Mr. Meyer has basically said, we're asking for possibly a 500, but we can, that can be discussed among the council, decide what you think would be safest way to go. Could be 300,000, 100,000. And then the payback, if we also decided to pay that half in March or April, and the other half in September, or pay the whole thing off, it depends on what the council decides.
I have another question. Mr. Meyer, how many years have we been doing this?
I know for sure it's been the last two. I'm not sure about the history prior to that. It's probably been at least, actually, probably at least three, because I think one yearly period, the last two were 500,000. So I'm not sure about the prior...
One prior to that, we moved 1.5.
Yeah, it's been over a year.
1.5, yeah. At one time.
Go ahead, Alderman. Go ahead.
You have on here for December, January covering, and March, a tax anticipation warrant. Are you talking about the same one rolling over, or are you talking about taking out additional ones?
Oh, not additional ones, no, no. That just shows you what the difference, the difference between the cash, what the cash would be at the end of the month without the warrants and what the cash would be at the end of the month with the warrants. So it's the same 500,000 that rolls month to month. Yeah, it's not a separate new issuance.
And then I have another question, and it's not actually on here, and if you don't have an answer, I understand. You said we're in a better cash position. How do our revenues for this year compare with our revenues for last year? Did we take in more money this year, or did we take in less money this year?
I actually don't have those figures in front of me. I could look into that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you. Next, in general, here is the transfer of funds from restricted and non-restricted funds in a total of $204,324. As noted at the bottom, we're going to be wiring a bond payment, 344-38126, this week, and also the vehicle loan payment, which was made on 11/21, which was actually due on the 15th and 16th. And those two will be paid by this week.
Your motion. Your motion, Alderman. Last thing. Second, Alderman, Holly. Any questions?
Yes, next question. What vehicles are we talking about? Fire, police vehicles, or what?
Well, these vehicles, loan was for the, if I'm not mistaken, was for the, we bought four, four police vehicles. The payment was from the bank.
Police, police vehicle?
I'm pretty sure it was, yes.
When did we buy a police vehicle?
Pardon?
When did we buy a police vehicle?
16, 16.
16, okay.
That's in a, that was on the payment plan, again, with the bank working with us. I think the total loan, I think the total loan was like 140, 150,000 for the four vehicles. That was complete purchasing, installing the, all the technology, the striping, painting, everything.
Any other questions?
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Frosko.
Hi.
Frosko, hi. Valado.
Hi.
Valado, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi.
Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Tenice.
Thank you. That's it. City attorney?
Yes, Mayor. The first ordinance on the agenda this evening is ordinance number 2018-063, an ordinance levying taxes for the city of Blue Island that occur this way year, commencing January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Holly, second. Ask a question. Will this be 2018?
It's the levy for the 2018 tax year. It will be collected next year.
Thanks. I have a question, I guess we should move quicker. I'd like to make adjustments to the pension and police to go with the recommended amounts based on Foster and Foster's recommendations. And after hearing Dave Meyer's presentation saying we're in a better shape, and we're not in a situation where we're hurting too much, I'd like to fund the pensions to, at the very least, the recommended amounts by the firm handling the pension funds. So at least we're trying to make up the difference of the backlog of years of not contributing what we're supposed to.
Any other comments?
Is there a number?
I second the motion. Yeah, what's the number for Alderman last?
So I want, well, attorney, before I continue, since there's a motion on the second on the floor, would we have to do a roll call? Vote against this and ask for a new motion?
No, you can make a motion to amend the line item that you're discussing. What page, what page of the levy is it? Is that the last page?
Mr. Meyer? The attorney might have a question you can answer better.
Okay.
What page of the levy are we adjusting? If we're allowing, I'm going to make a motion to go with the recommended amounts for the fire and police.
Okay, it's near the back. It's about five in from the back.
I think I see police fund here.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's police pension and fire pension are on the same page.
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion to adjust the levy. Account number 700, police pension, line 55110, is that correct?
Yes.
From the amount that's listed here to the recommended amount of 2.219 and change that was listed in the Foster and Foster report. And I'd like to amend.
2, 2, 2, 219,000.
1/8.
And 1/8.
And 1/8, and that would be for the police and for the fire.
Do you want to do them separately?
I was going to suggest that you do each one separately.
Okay.
No confusion.
So I make a motion to adjust the police pension from the 2,52,686 to the 2,219,180.
Got a motion?
And I second that.
Any questions? Roll call.
Roll call any amendment. Slattery.
Upstain.
Slattery, Upstain. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Frosko.
Hi.
Frosko, hi.
Valado.
Hi.
Valado, hi. Viera.
No.
Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Ossling.
No.
Ossling, no. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Six, one extension.
That motion fails.
I guess I have a question, because we did talk about this in appropriations for 2018. And we did, we did the middle of the road thing. So where is that number? How does that number ever play into this? This is seeming very confusing to me. Well, originally, I was thinking middle of the road, but after hearing Meyer's presentation and Alderman Carr's concerns, we made the motion to go. But didn't, so the amount that we appropriated, and we had the four-hour meeting for. That was for the levy last year. But the levy was passed before we had all those appropriations meetings. No, 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 no. We had those discussions at the levy meetings. No, appropriations. We just had the appropriations. No. We had appropriations in March. And I believe it was the levy meeting. It was the levy.
It was the levy.
Yes, it was last year's levy meeting. All right. Because the appropriation, I wouldn't, I'm making very pride. I wouldn't fight it like that for too far meanings for an appropriation. The levy is where it's black and white. What we levy is what we levy.
Feel?
I'm in the field, yeah.
Well, that's not the amendment.
Six highs, so how does, are you doing eight votes for financial reasons?
Yes.
It's a roll series, right?
I'm sorry, what?
The reason I have is because you need eight, is that it?
You can make a motion to amend the fire pension at this point in time, if you want to do that. I think you said you wanted, it's up to you, Alderman, I'm just telling you. You only made a motion to amend the police pension.
All right, I'll, I'll go forward with the fire. I'd like to make a motion to approve the levy with the amendment of changing account number 800, fire pension from the amount that's listed of, now, we have the two split here, Mr. Meyer, I might need your help here. From the 1.259118 to the 1,450,000 and?
70.
Seven?
78.
78. Is there a second on that?
I second the motion.
Second by Alderman Viera. You got a motion by Alderman Valado, second on the Viera. Any questions? We got the clarification as to which over the?
70 over 782.
I didn't write it down when he said it. I didn't have my handout.
All right, so I'm making a motion.
But you want the summation of those two amounts to be 1,450,780.
Yes.
Instead of, instead of 1,322074.
Yes.
Right.
So we got a motion, we got a second. We got that amount. Roll call.
Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Frosko.
Hi.
Frosko, hi.
Valado.
Hi.
Valado, hi. Viera.
No.
Rita, no.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Ossling.
No.
Ossling, no. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Seven highs. Seven.
Hi.
Two barcas, five, eight, two. Eight, three, I'm sorry.
The amendment is now effectively part of the tax levy ordinance. So the fire pension levy will be changed from 1,322074 to 1,450,780 dollars.
Just so you, just so we're aware, we're going to have to reduce a levy somewhere else in order to make this work, because we can't ask for more than 4.99999%. And so what we did last year was we reduced the fire protection levy. That's on a separate page.
I can't say what to do, but I can only talk. You're, you're telling the council what it must do at this point in time.
Yes, right. We, if we, if we ask for, if we raise one, we have to lower something else. And so that's part of the, that's part of the money. Let me walk up here so you can hear me better.
I think hopefully the council understands that. There's only so much money.
Right, we can only ask for so much. And so if we increase this, we'll have to reduce. What we did last year when we agreed to, when we reduced, there's a levy, a separate levy for fire protection that goes into the general fund and pays, helps pay for salaries. That we would reduce in order to make the math work.
The difference is 128,706 dollars.
All right, and I can supply you with those numbers when, when I have my computer. Does that make sense to everybody that, you know, there's going to be a correspondent increase elsewhere?
City clerk, just point out, so the council is aware, the police pension fund will, the levy will be 2,52,686 dollars, which is approximately 41,000 dollars over the minimum.
That's what Dave was saying, to make sure that, I just make sure, because the next vote is on the levy ordinance and that you know that it's, whatever happens.
And the fire pension levy will be 1,450,780 dollars. And was it, has it been determined whether the suggestion from Mr. Meyer to reduce, what is it? Fire protection?
Yes.
By an amount equal to the increase, which is 128,706 dollars. I would say it was determined to be the case. Is that, that would have to require an amendment as well. So someone's going to have to move to amend the levy in that regard or in some other fashion to bring it under the 4.99. Otherwise, you're required to go to a truth in taxation hearing. And we would have to look at the requirements of the statute, whether they can be amended. So does someone have a motion to address the difference? Because to amend the levy to address the difference of 128,706 dollars.
Got a motion, Alderman?
Frosko? Make a motion.
Second? Is there a second?
And Alderman, that means to then reduce the fire protection levy by that amount?
Yes, the motion is to adjust the, the numbers, to reduce the amount for the, what was that amount? That dollar amount, Mr. Meyer?
128,706 dollars. So the fire protection levy, just wait one second here.
What page is that on?
That's actually.
You can see it if you flip back like two or three more pages. There's a summary of each of the, there's a recap of all the amounts to be included in the levy. And about halfway down the page, there's a, it says total for fire protection tax. Right now, the amount stands at 789,155. So that's, that's why we're talking about reducing.
We would reduce that to 660,449 dollars.
Got a second, please a second.
I have a question.
Kulos was the second.
Second, Kulos was the second.
How will that affect the fire department? I mean, how will that?
Well, it affects the general fund. So all, all these tax monies are going into the general fund. And the money, the purpose of the specific levy is to fund fire protection. Your expenses, fire, exceed this levy amount. So it's part of the, part of the revenues are the, just the general revenues of the city to help pay those fire expenses.
So we got a motion, second. Any other questions?
The adjustment of the fire protection. Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Frosko.
Hi.
Frosko, hi.
Valado.
Hi.
Valado, hi. Viera.
No.
Viera, no. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi.
Holly. Hi.
Holly, hi. Ossling.
No.
Ossling, no. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Seven highs?
Hi.
Yes, in order to, Valado, answer your question, because it's an ordinance and you're amending an ordinance, and it's also financial, you do have to have a minimum.
No, I got that.
Now you're going back to the ordinance as amended.
So there was a motion, there was a second, correct?
Now, someone should make a motion to adopt the ordinance as amended in the three areas that were amended.
All, motion, Alderman Carr, second. Alderman, Holly, any questions?
Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Frosko.
Hi.
Frosko, hi.
Valado.
Hi.
Valado, hi. Viera.
No.
Viera, no. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Ossling.
No.
Ossling, no. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Hi.
Hi. There are, there are, hi.
The second item on the agenda is ordinance 2018, or ordinances 2018-061 and 062. An ordinance restricting a portion of a certain street for handicapped hardship only at 2733 Gruenold Street and 2204 Prairie Street within the city of Blue Island, county of Cook, and state of Illinois for violating penalties for the violation thereof.
Do we have a motion? Alderman Viera and Alderman Viera, any questions?
Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Frosko.
Hi.
Frosko, hi.
Valado.
Hi.
Valado, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Rita.
Hi.
Rita, hi. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi.
Thank you.
Number three is a motion to accept the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals for the property located at 2270 Grove and 13145 Chatham Street. And their recommendation in summary is to deny the request for the variation that was made by the property owner.
Is there a motion? Can I just give a motion, second, then we have any question?
I'll make a motion.
A motion, we have a second. Alderman, Holly, question?
Just want to verify, 2270 is the right address? Rare to see.
That was, I'm trying to find the extra.
Howard here?
It was 2270, and that was what was in the recommendation from the zoning board, so I'm, I know it's a high number.
It is, right.
If I know my address, I'll be really wrong.
Well, I'd say it's over Chatham, but I don't know the address.
It'd be rare. A personal house is usually, it's 70, the second two digits.
Maybe that's why they denied.
Yeah, 20, it ain't 2270. I know my neighborhood, that's not 2270. I need to clarify before we, I know, it's.
Do you have an address?
Well, it could be, the motion could be to deny or to accept the recommendation by the zoning board of appeals for the property as nicely described in the recommendation from the zoning board.
So what was it?
2207.
2207.
2207. So we're, we're going to make a motion again, for 2207. Got a motion, we have a second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Slattery.
Hi.
Slattery, hi. Kulos.
Hi.
Kulos, hi. Frosko.
Hi.
Frosko, hi.
Valado.
Hi.
Valado, hi. Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi. Ossling.
Hi.
Ossling, hi. Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi. Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi. Carr, aye.
That's all I have.
Committee reports, committee development committee.
I'll report, your honor, our next meeting is December 4th at 7:30 in the city council chamber.
Thank you. Finance committee?
Finance committee met on November 20th. Members present Alderman Vera, Holly, Ossing, Farwell, Gapsen, Alderman Frosto. Also present, Janelle Hunt, Treasurer, Belado, and Elizabeth Gray, Morgan. There was no public comment. The committee approved the filing. Accounts payable for 11/28/2018 in the amount of 955,22125 cents. Some of the large invoice items are the IG IG project. This was Longwood Drive. That was 504,115 dollars. The IFA bond interest and principal, 116,607 dollars and 82 cents. The California Garden crack ceiling coming out of tip three was 47,971 dollars and 14 cents. There was a lawsuit claim for 43,265 dollars. Service gave golf course maintenance, 30,767 dollars and 62 cents. And another lawsuit claim for 22,115 dollars and 76 cents. And the monthly electric service, 20,221 dollars and 59 cents. I'm trying to give you the 20,000 and up as far as the large invoices. Okay? Motion for approval?
We have a motion, we have a second. Alderman, Holly, any questions? Go ahead. Alderman, Belado.
I just, I'm gonna defer to Alderman Carr because it might be the same question Frosto. Go ahead, Alderman.
Under Illinois finance authority, that 116,000, do we know what that was for? I asked Mr. Marcel for, to look into it and he brought me a copy of the invoice. And on the invoice, it shows there was an increase in the principal amount between October the 3rd and October 29th of 64,100 dollars.
Yes, Alderman Carr did pull the invoice from the IFA. I said before, I was not able to pull the additional detail on that on what comprises that hundred-plus-thousand-dollar invoice.
I'd like to make a motion to...
I can, I can help out here. The, the IFA is the bond that we borrowed money against. And all of the money has not been borrowed yet. We've been waiting for invoices and for some of the projects that are ongoing that were slated to be paid with the IFA proceeds. And so as you borrow, the, the interest will go up because we borrowed, we have borrowed more money. So right now, the, the interest what we're paying is actually lower than what the payment schedule showed because we'd haven't borrowed the full amount. So that, that includes a scheduled payment that, that's due on the, on the bonds.
Okay, but there was an increase in the principal.
But, no, there shouldn't be an increase. Yeah, the principal did increase because we borrowed more money against the, the amount that we...
Okay, and I guess I'm asking, what did we borrow the money for?
It was for the projects that were ongoing. It was the sewer televising and then also the Leachate project over at the vaults. So those are two of the slated projects. When the, when the bonds were first approved, those projects were approved as part of the bond. But what are we gonna do with this money when we get it? Oh, we're gonna do the Leachate project. We're also gonna do the sewer televising. So those, those invoices were now submitted to the IFA and they gave us the money that, to be used to pay those projects. So now we've, effectively, we've borrowed more money. Not, we didn't exceed the, we have not even met the full amount that we agreed to borrow yet. It's ongoing.
I understand.
So that's why there's an increase in the principal.
The full amount was 1,300,000.
Correct.
Back in 2016.
Right. And so we're, we're inching our way there as the, as the bills come in from the contractors.
Did we approve something for the Leachate contract?
I believe that's what you said.
That's accounts payable because I, I asked the question and then when somebody said, oh, that was the, the Leachate films, I was like, oh, yeah. Because that, that was assigned to the water department and my question last night was...
It was, it gets, it gets paid out of the water department, the water, but then it gets reimbursed by the IFA loan.
So that's what that is.
Okay, and the I, it was 1.3 million dollars. Bond was a 1.3. There was a lot of projects that were in there, okay? There was, we, we bought an ambulance, we bought trucks for the public works. We did the driving region, of course. As we use the money, they reimburse us. And now we're almost at, what, a couple hundred thousand dollars left in there, I think. It's pretty much all used up. Because on that gig, the gig got 500-some-thousand, that's what we had to pay them. Okay, we got reimbursed 429,000 for the grant. So the difference from 429 to the 505, that was supposed to come from the IFA loan also. So in Longwood Drive, there's another, I think another 300,000 or 400,000 dollars in Longwood Drive that's gonna come out of, out of that IFA loan.
Yes.
So all the monies accounted for in, was required. What Mr. Meyer is basically trying to explain to you, the interest was, it's like a reverse mortgage. As you use up more of the principal of the equity, you're gonna be paying more interest. So we're almost at the end right now. And then I think it was a 10-year payment plan? IFA. Right. I think it's a 10-year payment plan. So we've been paying the principal on the whole amount, but the interest was only on what we borrowed.
All right.
Right, and as, as we borrow more, the interest is gonna go up and then pretty soon it'll match the payment schedule that was originally agreed upon.
Any other questions? Is that real call?
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a payroll for November 16th in the amount of 320,544 dollars and a left-off percent, which is 45 cents. Motion for approval?
We have a motion, we have a second. Alderman, Vera, any questions? Roll call, please.
Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Ossling.
Aye.
Ossling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Ten i's.
Thank you.
The City of Blue Island rain garden cultivation proposal will come back to finance for further review. The committee approved engineering, approved engineering to enter into phase one for the RTA grant. Request for Aldi to renew a class eight application was tabled. The committee had discussions on tip three closeout and the tax anticipation warrant. No further business, motion to adjourn at 8:15. Our next meeting is December 4th, 7 o'clock East Annex.
Thank you very much. Public health and safety committee?
No report, your honor. Our next regular meeting will be December 11th at 6 o'clock here in the East Annex.
Thank you. Municipal services committee?
We just had our meeting. Our next meeting falls on Christmas Eve, so we're going to cancel our meeting and the next municipal services meeting will be January 22nd, 2019, 6 p.m. here in the East Annex.
Thank you very much. Judiciary committee, any other minutes? Any other announcements or comments? Go ahead.
So it's that time of year again and I'm collecting cereal for Angels Touch. If you could please donate a box or two of your favorite cereal for a worthy cause. You could drop it off during business hours at Blue Island City Hall in the clerk's office or at State Rep Bob Rita's office at 2353 York Street or at Climate Township Community Center on 12633 South Ashland Avenue. My deadline is December 9th, so if anyone could please donate, again, it's for a worthy cause. Also, I would like to announce, we're gonna be doing a Santa House in the third ward and that's gonna be December 6th on Thursday. It will be on Wood Street. We're partnering with the Blue Island Park District and it's going to be between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. And I also would like to give a shout out to Public Works with the great job they did with plowing the snow. So thank you.
Any other announcements? Alderman, Holly?
Christmas in Blue Island event is on Saturday and the weather's not looking great, but please just keep hoping that it's gonna blow over and be done. Done early or come after. So anyways, there's events at High and Western in the parking lot between High and Union on Western Avenue. There'll be free rides for kids. There'll be a Kringle Mart, which is probably, I think, the biggest one that we've had so far. I think there's almost 30 vendors signed up to participate in the Kringle Mart. So there'll be a big tent in the parking lot. The rides will be there. The parade kicks off at 5:30 at Prairie and Western and will head south to New Street. Again, we'll be lining up, staging the parade on Greenwood Avenue and Prairie. So there'll be no parking on either side of Greenwood or Prairie, just from 3 till 6 o'clock. So we can stage the parade. And it should be a nice night. There'll be open houses all the way up and down Western Avenue. All the restaurants will be open and a lot of businesses will be having special events that night. So come on out and don't forget to go to the library as well. And so come on out and have a good time in Blue Island for Christmas.
Alderman?
I'd just like to make a comment about the pensions that we voted on. You know, Alderman Blado's right, we're just kicking the can. You know, police is only 31% funded, fire is only 23%. As a first refiner myself, seeing 31 and 23%, that basically says that we don't care about 31% of the police department and 23% of the fire department. I understand that when you levy, you're taking money from somewhere else. But you know, these guys and girls that are out there working holidays, rainy, sleet, in the heat, responding to whatever calls, you know, domestics, gun calls, fires, they're putting their lives on the line, you know, in hopes that when they retire or if something after that happens to them, their family has this pension when, you know, they're done with their job. And it's just, you know, 31% and 23%. I understand we don't have the money and I understand previous administrations, you know, barely did the minimum and took money out of it. And to me, it's just, you know, unacceptable.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Alderman. Spencer?
I'd just like to remind you, Alderman, that since you canceled the second meeting of December, we don't want to have the same issue as last year. Mr. Marcel and Mr. Meyer and myself, if I sit down and have a proposal for you on the first, next council, we sell.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do I go into retirement debt? Really?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is retired executive session, consideration of discussion handled, any litigation, any motion? Pulos, second. Carr, all in favor? All in. I'm sorry, is that? Make a motion for reconsidering, you got a motion, Alderman Vera, do you have a second? Ossling?
Slattery.
Sally?
Pulos is here. Belado. Viera. Rita.
Here.
Holly.
Here.
Ossling. Carr.
Here.
I guess in closed session, the city council discussed, or I discussed with the city council the status of settlement negotiations in a pending lawsuit, Thomas versus the City of Blue Island. No final action was taken.
Thank you. Last, now, do you have a motion for adjournment? Do you have a motion by Pulos? I think Val and Viera, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody. See you next meeting.